Hafaday and good afternoon to you and the people of Guam. Today is Thursday, April 4th, 2024. This public hearing will be conducted by myself, Senator William A. Parkinson, Chairman of the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance and Universal Health Insurance. This hearing is called to order and the time is now 2:05. For the record and to comply with the open government law, notice of this hearing was disseminated via email to all senators and local media outlets on Thursday, March 28, 2024. And the second notice was also shared to all senators and local media on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. Notice this hearing was also posted and available on the Guam Legislature's website and the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal. We have two bills on our agenda today. We will first discuss Bill Number 260-37, COR. Upon conclusion, we will take a short recess and come back for Bill Number 262-37, LS. At this time, we will hear testimony and discussion on Bill Number 260-37, COR. Introduced by myself, William A. Parkinson, an act to add a new subsection 8108, 7 of Division 1, Chapter 8, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Lawful Operation of Cannabis-Related Facilities. Thank you, everyone, for joining us here today. If you have any testimony, feel pleased for it comes up to the tables. Rules of conduct of this hearing. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and states your name and title for record-keeping purposes. Panel members are asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substantive nature of the agenda. Personal infringement as to the character and motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. Individuals who fail to abide by these rules will be restricted from participating and will be escorted and removed from the room. We will now proceed with discussion on Bill Number 260-37, COR, which I will do my opening remarks as prime sponsor. Bill 260-37 is a matter of critical importance to the advancement of our cannabis industry. The issue at hand is the current requirements for mandatory lab testing of cannabis before it could be sold at retail. It's a requirement that, while well-intentioned, has inadvertently stimulated development of a regulated, safe and economically beneficial cannabis market. The intention behind the lab testing requirement is commendable, to ensure the safety and quality of cannabis products sold within our jurisdiction. However, the absence of a licensed retail cannabis testing lab has led to an unintended and unfortunate salemate. Retail cannabis businesses poised to operate within the bounds of our legal and regulatory framework find themselves at an impasse, unable to open their doors to the public. And then potential lab businesses, key players in unlocking the gridlock, remain on the sidelines, hesitant to invest in facilities and operation without a clear understanding of the market they will serve. A market currently obscured by the very absence of these operational retail labs and outlets. This catch-22 scenario deprives our jurisdiction not only of valuable economic opportunities, but also of critical tax revenues that could support public health, education and safety initiatives. Meanwhile, this impasse has inadvertently bolstered the very issue lab testing seeks to mitigate, the sale of untested, potentially unsafe cannabis products on the black market. This unregulated market operates devoid of oversight, consumer protection, taxation, and this undermines our efforts to ensure public safety and depriving our community of significant economic benefits. This measure is a pragmatic step towards establishing a regulated, safe and economically viable cannabis industry. By enabling retail businesses to commence operations, we can catalyze the development of the necessary lab infrastructure driven by a clear and present market demand. The CNMI, our neighbor, has no lab testing requirement, and they have operated a safe, reliable cannabis market for years with no issue. Such a waiver should be considered an interim solution on Guam as the requirement for testing is reinstated automatically once there is a cannabis testing lab open on Guam. In conclusion, by supporting this bill, we embrace a solution-oriented approach to a complex challenge. We open the door to economic opportunities, job creation and increased tax revenue, while laying the foundation for a safe, regulated cannabis market that benefits all members of our community. So, at this time, I would like to open up the floor to public testimony. Go ahead, sir, if you would like to begin. State your name for the record and your title or whatever you'd like to share.
Thank you, Senator. My name is Stephen Roberto. I own Guam's Real Deal, a company that's interested in establishing a legal cannabis business on Guam. I'm pleased to submit testimony to the Committee on Fire, Agricultural, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance and Universal Healthcare to testify in support of Bill Number 260-37, an act to add a new subsection 8108, Paragraph 7 of Division 1, Chapter 8, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the lawful operation of cannabis-related facilities. In 2019, the legislature established the legal framework for the cannabis industry for our island. Five years later, instead of a taxed and regulated legal market, there's an illegal market operating alongside a bureaucratic maze that makes it, at best, expensive and, at worst, impossible for Guam residents to establish a cannabis business on island. As just one example, I received my responsible official card in October 2022. It's actually September 22, but they held the cards back till October. As described in local news reports, getting a responsible official card is the third step in a six-step process to opening a cannabis business. I've been attached to my written testimony several quotes from the Guam Daily Post. Yet after receiving my responsible official card, I made the difficult decision to stop moving forward on my cannabis business because it is a waste of money to pursue a license and start a business-growing product that cannot be sold due to a lack of a certified testing facility. Guam law requires any testing facility be ISO 17025 accredited or certified by the Americans for Safe Access Patient-Focused Certification Program for testing facilities or a similar program approved by the Department of Public Health. ISO 17025 is not something to be taken lightly. There is no testing facility on Guam, let alone an ISO 17025 accredited testing facility. Worse, once a testing facility is open on Guam, that does not solve the problem because the process for a laboratory to obtain accreditation is a bit more involved than completing an application and paying a fee. In fact, the process is described as follows, and I've also included in my written testimony online links to the accrediters that will do ISO certification and this list. "The laboratory will typically partner with an accredited body who will provide additional requirements to help the laboratory establish a management system that satisfies the requirements of the standard. Once ready, the laboratory will submit an application to the accreditation body with a myriad of documents and records that describe and document the established quality management system and its specific list of technical methods the laboratory seeks to accredit. And thus begins a roughly six-month cycle of assessments, corrective actions and approvals. During this time, a contracted assessor representing the accredited body will evaluate the laboratory and provide an initial report of the laboratory's performance to the ISO standard. The laboratory is given an opportunity to respond to the assessor's findings and update the management system accordingly. When all parties agree that the laboratory management system conforms to the minimum requirements, a certificate and scope of accreditation are presented. It is only after the certificate has been received that the laboratory can make claims to this accreditation." Also, accreditation is not a lifelong credential. It must be renewed every two years. The process of surveillance assessments, where the accredited body reviews any changes to the laboratory, the management system itself and its capabilities before providing a renewed accreditation certificate. Again, I've attached some online links for you to review as well that can dive a little bit deeper into the accreditation process in regards to ISO 17025. Put it differently, if a lab opened tomorrow, it would still take almost a year to get certified because we must prepare for certification, then go through the actual certification process, and the certification process itself takes at a minimum six months. I say this not to criticize the accreditation process or of Guam's requirement to have an accredited lab. I point this out to explain the regulatory hurdles any lab must navigate before it can operate. This is not much different than any cannabis business. The regulatory burdens are high. Thus, waiting for a lab to get certified is another potential delay and at least another year of lost revenue for the government of Guam. Bill Number 260-37 strikes a balance between the public safety and starting a robust, legal, regulated and taxable cannabis market on Guam. Bill Number 260-37 recognizes that there is not a certified lab on the island and recognizes the regulatory hurdles and commitment any lab must take to get the proper certification. It also recognizes that once such a lab is established and properly certified, testing will commence immediately. I've been up north to see how the neighbors in the CNMI handle this issue. The CNMI has an operational robust cannabis industry, not reliant on testing and not suffering any adverse effects from the lack of testing. I support accredited testing if it is available and would urge the legislature to take the middle road offered by Bill Number 260-37, waiving the testing requirements until a lab is operational and properly certified. Finally, I want to offer a note of caution. The more rules, regulations and hurdles put in place by well-meaning regulators raises the cost of doing business and thus the price of legal cannabis. Cannabis can be grown easily in this climate, and there's a very real possibility of driving the price so high as to encourage the black market even more. This is a current problem in California, and again, I've highlighted and included in my written testimony online links where there is empirical data to prove this point. I feel that Guam... I'm sorry. As pointed out in the article, black market shops are unburdened by the on-risk taxes and regulations that legal dispensaries in California must contend with. The illicit shops can offer marijuana at much cheaper prices. The delay involved in establishing the legal framework, the costs involved with starting a federally illegal business and the adverse tax law on Guam will make it difficult for legitimate businesses to compete with the black market. I urge the legislature to make this as efficient as a process as possible. Guam should be in a position to have an effective cannabis regulatory and taxation framework. Currently, I do not believe it is in that position. I believe this bill represents an initial step in fixing the already-delayed cannabis industry regulatory scheme. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Soodus Masi.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, ma'am. Please state your name and title for the record and please share your testimony with us. Hold on a second.
Check. Hafaday. Thank you. Excuse my voice. I lost it during Easter Sunday. On behalf of the Amabuhae, I am Kayla de Rosario, and I am representing this testimony on behalf of the Homegrown Collective. We created the Homegrown Collective to unite cannabis advocates and allies through storytelling, education and wellness to break the stigma and enhance Guam's multi-industrious resources in a more efficient way. We are here to show support for Bill 260-37, COR. However, we have additional suggestions to ensure our community is accessing safe, clean and quality cannabis flower to include in this amendment. As we do agree that cannabis flower must be marked with a label indicating the potency of cannabis that includes the total amount of cannabinoids content, including THC and other phyto cannabinoids such as CBD, CBG and THCV, there is much that this current amendment does not consider, such as a clear standard of how people are getting present cannabinoid percentages or also a recommendation of method or equipment. There is no specifications of the amount, strain or terpenes of cannabinoids, batch number, date of harvests or sales, nutrients or chemical additives used to grow the flower, a Guam product seal or something similar. The following disclaimer statements: "The marijuana contained within this package has not been tested for contaminants" and "Two, marijuana use can be addictive and can impair an individual's ability to drive a motor vehicle or heavy operating machinery. Marijuana smoke contains carcinogens and can lead to an increased risk for cancer and many other diseases." And it should also have a keep-out-of-reach for children, for protection of children. And there should also be a fine for whenever these... whenever these are not properly labeled. So we hope that this list can provide optional inclusions of what cultivators are required to share with consumers and the community. We'd also like to remind and urge... Please correct me if I say this wrong. Ilahet slateren guahan, that cannabis cultivators are farmers too. Though cannabis has psychedelic properties such as THC that makes it difficult for other crops. For other crops, it is nonetheless that a crop. The requirements for cultivating cannabis without a lab should seamlessly follow along the guidelines for all agricultural producers such as obtaining a bona fide farmer's license. The main difference would be that their produce must be vetted before going to the market and must be labeled accordingly like any packaged consumption item such as locally-made denancy or beer sold in grocery stores. We believe that going this route will have a positive impact by empowering the community to make responsible and intentional decisions based on the flower we choose because of the local transparency. Our goal is to move the cannabis industry forward, not create more barriers. Thank you for your time, and we are the Homegrown Collective.
Thank you very much. And then I believe we also had some Zoom testimony. I think we are ready for that. If the gentleman is still hanging by. Hello, sir. Hafaday from Guam. Can't hear you, sir.
Hi, sir. Can you... Yeah, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you now, sir.
Okay, yeah. Hafaday and buenas from the CNMI. My name is James Hemley, and I'm also going to give my testimony in regards to how we fared off here in the CNMI in regards to legalization since our status to date. And I will also talk about Bill 260 and its intention for Guam. So, again, my name is James Hemley. I helped in 2015 with the medical marijuana-only bill that was introduced by then-Senator Sixto Igusomar. And I reviewed it, and we basically dissected it and found the flaws involved in the language. The most important in particular was the mandated testing language. We knew that Hawaii was suffering because they legalized for medical in Hawaii over 10 years. Back then, they already lapsed over 10 years of not having commercial sales for their medical patients. They could only grow at home. We knew that was happening. That's a fact. We knew that Guam's bill was also going to cause a very big road bump. The lab testing alone already killed the industry before it started for Guam. We already knew that. I tried reaching out to the Guam members before it even went into law and before it passed in 2014. But I guess, well, it's done. What's done, it's done. Fast forward now, Guam already has a recreational law in place. I do know that the medical program also lapsed in language with the recreational. Maybe that's why there are some issues regarding how things are being done. It is, but I will give you the status assignment. We did not require mandated testing because we already knew the fact that we're not going to have any lab testing facility done here on a very small island, given our population and the cost of doing such operation. So with that said, we didn't want to be like Hawaii or what Guam was going to go through. We didn't want to create an industry by law only to have it not get started because we put something in the law that prevented us from doing so. So what we did is we compromised legislatively. My groups and supposed CNMI worked with the legislatures in the Senate and the House on different times in drafting. So many drafts took place. Bottom line is, we told them it will not happen, given we have lab testing. It will not happen. That's a fact. Okay? With that said, they asked what options could we put on the table? And we said, we mandated labeling that states "untested product." It's a caveat emptor, buyer beware. As adults, it is an adult-use law. It's not for minors. It's for 21 years of age or older. That will be consumers, growers and purchasers. You know, those that go into the retail stores to buy them. And we said, as the buyers go into the retail, they would notice if a product is tested or not based on the label. As an adult, they are fully aware of the consequence that the product has not been tested if that was the case. In short, I'm going to backtrack this. During our meetings at the Senate, it was very clear. We said it many times that cannabis has been in the marijuana squam and the CNMI since the 1970s. We have not had any adverse consequences to untested marijuana. We were not doing tests. So we should not overthink anything. We're not introducing something new, you know, to the people. It's a black market commodity, and all we are doing is introducing it to the legal side of the industry, hence the cannabis law that allows the legal use and grow and sell of cannabis. Now, with that said, the sky has not fallen to this day with our lab testing in the CNMI. As a matter of fact, more and more producers are signing up for licensing. We got retailers signing up this year for licensing of producers. We got lounge prospects for lounge licenses as well as processing. So that's the state of where we're at now in the CNMI. However, I want to go to Bill 260, which is Guam's bill that's on the floor right now. And the requirement with the ASA certification program is very costly. It's one that has very strict guidelines. It's very costly. The first gentleman earlier stated, you know, the consequences of having such a program in place. The bill's amendment calls for a type of testing, which is for total cannabinoids and other cannabinoids like THCV, CBD, CBG and whatnot. And with that said, it is progress forward. Okay? And when I say progress forward, it means that they are not bound by a certified program. It just means that those people that are going to sell flowers have to put a label that states the percentage of those cannabinoids. The advantage to this is the operators who will be doing the testing, whether they are producers or whether they are retailers, they would have the option to select the equipment they want, you know, to make the test, to make the labels to place on those products. Take note that the price will increase a little bit because testing is going to involve some money, not just the equipment. These come with lab kits, and lab kits do require new, how you say, materials. You know, they need resources for testing samples. They don't reuse the same sample. Okay? So there will be some increase in pricing that would be shouldered by the consumers. This is business, and it'll be treated as such. So if a grower raises his price to the retailer who buys his flowers, the retailer's going to raise those prices also because of the impact. And that consumer who buys it will be shouldering the costs. We have to be mindful on how we go about with this, and I guess the Cannabis Control Board would have a say in how testing is done. I don't know what their role will be in this regard. But in a nutshell, it's a step forward, you know? The sky has not fallen on our end. So Guam can either go with this amendment. It will be beneficial because for those, I've done research in the lab testing equipment, and they could range from $500 to $200,000 depending on the scope of analysis that is to be done. Okay? Now, if someone really wants to get into the retail side, which is the commercial sales of cannabis, be it a producer or retailer or lounge and whatnot, processor for edibles, they will decide for themselves how they would acquire set equipment. And they are affordable. They do have a cost, but it's doable. And it's a step forward. I believe this is something the CNMI would probably lean into when we amend our law. We have not done so since we went legal with the companion bill. But we have changes to make. It's not perfect, but it is progress, you know? So I commend Senator Parkinson for introducing this bill. The cannabis community, you know, at large from the CNMI down to Guam are well-versed in regards to cannabis culture. Guam has seen many events and seminars over the years, even without commercial sales taking place. We got 420 events, the 710 events, the Growers Cup. We got so many things going on in Guam right now. The only thing lacking is the legal commercial sales for this industry. And I believe once this thing is passed and signed into law to set it up this way, I believe that the serious people who want to get into commercial sales for cannabis would be ready and willing to open their doors and start right away with the legal market and basically have your guys' first legal sales of cannabis flowers or concentrates or whatnot. So again, I would like to commend Senator Parkinson and the other honorable senators who will be supporting him with this amendment. And I really, really hope that it passes. Okay? So I'm going to sum it up. You can have no testing at all like the CNMI, okay? But we mandated labels that said "no testing required" or "it's a non-tested product." But if you do testing required, remember that there's going to be price increases associated with those operations. It would make access and make improvements in the future available because you're able to determine and gauge the success of the industry from then here on out. We can gauge it yet because we have not done any legal sales. of the industry from then here on out. We can gauge it yet because we have not done any legal sales. As for our end, we're doing okay. We hope to have some type of testing. I do concur that testing is required particularly for edibles because of dosing or for those that are gonna use it for medical purposes. But when we're talking about recreational cannabis for commercial, testing is not really that important to us as it never has been since the seventies. The sky has not fallen. But if you will do testing and there's a compromise to be done, then Bill two sixty dash thirty-seven COR is the way to go. And from there, I believe we can make things better for Guam. So they can really, really move forward. You got a lot of sick people down there. It's, they've waited too long. You're going ten years since you legalized for medical. And I don't think they have time to keep waiting for them to get safe and legal medication. They don't have to go to the black market. Some of them go to the black market to get their medication and some just don't because they don't wanna take risks. So they opt to take medications that are harmful to their body because they have no choice. With legal access, they're able to have that choice. So I really hope that you, honorable senators, please back Senator Parkinson on this bill and the public, hopefully, and stakeholders. And we really gotta move forward. It's been too long. I don't think Guam wants to wait another ten years for something to happen. So thank you again for having me. You know, I look forward to Guam's progress on this one. Thank you. See you, Smalsee.
Thank you so much, sir. I've worked towards the cause of safe and legal cannabis for a very long time. I started initially, like many of you, I started in the activism end. And then I found myself on the Cannabis Control Board. And now I see myself here as a senator, still continuing to put forward the cause of cannabis for our community. And this problem of the lab is one that, like this gentleman that previously spoke, highlighted well, that he said that as soon as there was a lab requirement, it basically killed the industry. Because it put us in an impossible chicken and an egg situation. These businesses cannot move forward without a lab. And these labs do not wanna open until they're clear what their risk is gonna be, what the market is going to look like. So this solution of a temporary waiver of labs until a lab opens is a practical solution that puts both sides in a winning position. The industry gets to move on and open and no product rots on the vine. And labs can open at their leisure with an accurate and clear picture of what the actual market for their services will look like. As for consumers, without a lab requirement, that will actually lead to lower prices on the onset. Because that lab testing is not going to be a cost pushed onto the consumer as, as a, as a, as a forwarded cost. Eventually, it will. Eventually, a lab will open. And as the gentleman from Saipan said, the, the, the cost of that testing will be passed on to the consumers. But I've seen in a lot, in my research with a lot of these markets, that there is a big spike in the price of cannabis when markets open. And if we could do anything we can to lower those prices when they spike immediately, I think that's a benefit to not only the businesses, but to the consumers as well. This is the middle path. This is the middle path. As a senator, I've always believed in removing barriers to jobs and putting material help in people's pockets, especially the working and middle class. But I also believe in removing red tape for businesses. I think it's important to give small businesses an opportunity to thrive for commerce and entrepreneurship to flourish. And this bill is my attempt to move the cannabis industry in that direction. I take the testimony about additional disclaimers, fines for mislabeling, and also I think that's a fantastic idea to really integrate the cannabis community with the farming community, make you all bona fide farmers and all the benefits that come with that. I would absolutely support any steps to help get the cannabis community integrated with the farming community. And that's maybe something we could have a future conversation on, on how to integrate the cannabis community in a holistic way. I think we're closer than anybody ever realizes to really opening this industry. And we're a few, we're a few hurdles away from getting there. And so I've always said to myself that the job of getting this cannabis industry open isn't done when we pass bills or we do resolutions or anything like that. It's done when the first receipt has been written for the first cannabis product at the first open store. So until we get to that point, I will continue to be an advocate for cannabis and cannabis businesses and the cannabis industry. And I look forward to future discussion on this matter once this gets to the floor. So thank you, everybody, for coming in today. I appreciate your testimony. Before I leave, I almost forgot. I have testimony from a few gentlemen in Saipan as well. They're very short, so I'll just read them out here, but I thought they were illustrative because these, these folks, I personally met them and they were both gentlemen that had lived on Guam and Saipan. So I thought their perspective was unique in that sense. And so the first one is from a gentleman. His name is Jesse Torres regarding lab testing. Saipan does not require a lab to test marijuana. It has been legalized for around five years now. And Saipan now has five dispensaries and one cannabis lounge. Saipan collected two hundred eighty K in taxes for two thousand twenty-three. There has been no marijuana-related crimes. Most crimes such as robbery, theft, domestic abuse, and assault are due to crystal meth and alcohol, not marijuana. Guam does not need a testing lab for marijuana. That's just more red tape and government interference. Jesse Torres. And the other testimony is from a friend of mine. His name is Santi Sablon. To whom it may concern, I, Santi Santo Sablon, is in support of waiving the lab testing. I am one hundred percent in support of the idea, as in Saipan, people aren't filling up the hospitals, accidents aren't up, and it is beneficial. Waiving the lab testing would make the industry stand up faster. We did it in Saipan. We should be doing it too for Guam. Former Saipan resident and radio personality, Santi Santo Sablon. So we've seen testimony from people who are living what we are proposing and the sky, as they said, has not fallen. I think it's important to us to take the steps so that these businesses can open before nationwide legalization happens. Nationwide legalization would mean that our island could be potentially flooded with cheap cannabis from other states without, without us being able to control it. That would kill any cultivation industry on Guam in its infancy. So while federal bans on cannabis are ironically protecting our local market, we should do what we can now to get these local markets established before we have to compete with the rest of the world. And with that, that will, there are no further questions or comments. This will conclude our discussion on Bill number two sixty dash thirty-seven COR. My office will continue to accept written testimony on today's hearing within five business days from today, which would be mailed to my office at two thirty-eight Archbishop Flores Street, Suite nine oh five of the DNA Building in Hagania. You may also send your written testimony to my office via email, senatorparkinson@guamilegislature.org. Thank you for your participation. We will take a short recess and come back for the next item on our agenda. And that is Bill number two six two dash thirty-seven LS. We are in recess. Half a day and good afternoon. We are back from recess. This public hearing is called back to order and the time is now two forty-seven. Notice of this hearing was disseminated by email to all senators and local media outlets on Thursday, March twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-four. And the second notice was also shared to all senators and local media on Tuesday, April second, two thousand twenty-four. Notice of this hearing was also posted and available on the Guam Legislature's website and the Government of Guam Public Notice Portal. The Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance, and Universal Health Insurance will now accept testimony and discussion on Bill number two six two dash thirty-seven LS, introduced by myself, William A. Parkinson, and act to approve the terms and conditions of the issuance by Guam Power Authority of Revenue Bonds to refund outstanding Guam Power Authority Revenue Bonds. I would like to thank GPA for being here today. We will now proceed with discussions on Bill number two six two dash thirty-seven LS, which I will giving my opening remarks as the prime sponsor. Bill two six two dash thirty-seven LS is a pivotal legislation poised to authorize the Guam Power Authority to refinance its existing Series two thousand fourteen revenue bonds. This bill is a testament to our collective commitment to ensuring economic stability, operational efficiency, and most importantly, the financial well-being of the ratepayers we are duty-bound to serve. By capitalizing on favorable market conditions to refinance its outstanding revenue bonds, GPA is set to unlock substantial savings, tangible benefits that will directly be passed on to our ratepayers. The refinancing strategy outlined in Bill two six two dash thirty-seven LS demonstrates a meticulous and judicious approach to financial management with the potential to reduce the GPA's annual debt service payments significantly. The projected outcomes, as detailed in the testimony that will be provided by GPA, underscore the substantial benefits of this refinancing effort from lowering interest rates to achieving millions in net present value savings. Such prudence will enable the GPA to continue enhancing resiliency and power generation with less burden to our taxpayers. We must be aggressive in finding savings as the recent increase in LEAC rate did not fully cover the anticipated increased cost of fuel. And I welcome this initiative by GPA to lower their debt service. We are about one step in this process with this already being approved by the CCU and needing approval by the PUC and GITA after the legislature to effectuate the intent of this bill. When market conditions are right for savings, all our ducks must already be in a row to take advantage of those savings. And that is why I have fast-tracked this bill for placement in the April session agenda. I welcome all comments and debate on this bill. So at this time, I'd like to open up the floor. Please say your name and your title and please share your testimony.
Hello, my name is John Kim. I'm from Guam Power Authority. I am CFO. Mr. Benefety is unfortunately not able to make it today because he has to go to the hospital to see his doctor. On his behalf, half a day, Senator Parkinson, the Guam Power Authority is pleased to offer testimony in support of Bill two six two dash thirty-seven LS as introduced. GPA continuously evaluates its operations and finances to identify issues that will improve service and cost savings for its rate pairs. Restructuring certain revenue bonds is one avenue to achieve rate pair savings and improved services. If passed, Bill six two dash thirty-seven LS will help GPA garner savings for Guam rate pairs. The current market conditions provide an opportunity to refund all or portion of its outstanding revenue bond, which is expected to result in potential savings for the rate pairs. GP has three outstanding revenue bonds totaling approximately four hundred forty-three million. Its two thousand fourteen Series A bond is callable as early as July two thousand twenty-four. GPA has seen a proposal from its underwriter indicating that GPA could refinance its five percent bond at around four point five percent, reducing annual debt service payments by about twenty-two thousand. The numbers thereafter reflect potential outcome estimated by GPA's underwriter, Bank of America. This potential source comply with the mandated benchmark on which bond refinancing is authorized. GPA's two thousand fourteen Series A bonds have an outstanding principal of sixty-five million, sixty-five point eight million at an interest rate of five percent with fifty-eight point nine million callable beginning October first, two thousand twenty-four. Regular bond interest rates are low and the bond market's appetite for triple tax sent bonds remains strong, presenting a favorable bond refunding environment. Federal tax law restricts a tax and refunding of these bonds to close no earlier than ninety days prior to the call date or July third, two thousand twenty-four for GPA's two thousand fourteen A bond. The refunding with a projected total interest cost of four point five percent will result in approximately two point six million in net present value savings. Upon receiving legislative approval to proceed with the two thousand fourteen A bond refinancing, the matters would go before the Guam Public Utilities Commission for consideration and approval. Once, once all necessary approval achieved, GPA will work quickly with GITA to achieve. GPA will work quickly with G I D A to achieve the maximum savings through its refunding. Bond refunding is one of several approaches to increase rate pair savings. Uh, Sis Massey for your consideration. Mr. Beneventi.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Mary Paus Perez, Assistant CFO in support of Bill two six-two dash thirty-seven.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Could you repeat your name and title again?
Mary Paus Perez, Assistant CFO.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm here in support of Mr. Kim, yeah.
Oh, I, I apologize. For some reason, I thought you were G I D A. All right, I understand. All right, um, thank you for your testimony. I appreciate it. Um, you know, this seems like it's a pretty straightforward thing, so I'll, you know, I'm happy to help you guys get this through. Uh, at this time, I'd just like to read additional testimony from G I D A in support of the bill. Hafaday, Senator Parkinson, and members of the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance and Universal Health Insurance. My name is Carlos Bernalio, the Guam Economic Development Authority Deputy Administrator, and I'm here to submit testimony in support of Bill number two six-two dash thirty-seven L S, an act to approve the terms and conditions of the issuance by the Guam Power Authority of Revenue Bonds to refund outstanding Guam port, Guam Power Authority Revenue Bonds. My sincere apologies that I am not able to attend today's public hearing, but I have scheduled a scheduled meeting that I could not cancel at this time. G I D A in this role as the central financial manager and consultant for the Governor of Guam monitors and advises the government on financial options that can best support and achieve certain goals and objectives. The twenty fourteen A Guam Power Authority bonds have a current call date of July twenty twenty-four. As we approach the call date with a goal to take advantage of investor interests in triple tax exempt bonds, G I D A has worked with GPA on options to finance based on their financial condition. Based on current market rates and after review with assigned underwriters, we estimate that a current refunding of the twenty fourteen Series A bonds currently provide net present value savings of anywhere from two point five million to three point three million or four point three percent, four point three six percent to five point two percent of refunded par. We have also reviewed a possible bond tender, another term for bond refunding of the twenty seventeen Series A bonds, which could also be pursued to achieve additional savings. All these mean savings to the GPA ratepayers. Note that strong investor interest is evidenced by the successful refunding of the Guam Waterworks Authority twenty fourteen bonds this past February, twenty twenty-four. GW had successfully priced one hundred eighty-four point nine million in refunding bonds, reducing future debt service payments and achieving net present value savings of seven point zero two percent with all-in true interest cost of three point nine seven percent. The GWA team with the support of G I D A and BBMR took advantage of market rates and strong investor interests with two point one five six billion in total orders from forty-one different investors, allowing the compression of the final interest rates by five to twenty-five basis points, depending on maturity. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of Bill two six-two dash thirty-seven L S. Should you have any questions, please contact me via email at carlosburalio@investguam dot Guam. Sis Massey, Carlos Bernalio, G I D A Deputy Administrator. So pretty straightforward. I'm happy to help you guys. Let's get that, let's get that money back into the pockets of the ratepayers any way we can. And if there is, uh, no more questions or comments, this will conclude our discussions on Bill number two six-two dash thirty-seven L S. Uh, my office will continue to accept written testimony on today's hearing within five business days from today, which would be mailed to my office at two thirty-eight Archbishop Flores Street, Suite nine oh five of the DNA Building in Hagatnia. You may also send your written testimony to my office via email at senatorparkinson@guamlegislature.org. Thank you all for your participation. Bill two six-two dash thirty-seven L S is now duly heard. This public hearing is adjourned and the time is now three fifty-seven.